Which one?
The gate was not open to be accessed for fishing derbies. It has been open and will be until further notice.
Yeah, the cable was across at the entrance for the beach, so nobody could get in there.
Yeah, I know. But it wasn't strictly for the fishing derbies at that point.
The gate had not been open, but now it is, is what that's saying.
Okay, let's go to the very last line in the page. Mike drove stated through the town land and forest land that they need to get a settlement. I think it should say through the town and forest land instead of land and... I'm really picky, I'm sorry. Page four. Under Scott Welch, the second one, the second paragraph, it says he is a forester. I think it should be comma, but hasn't been registered in years with the state, so he can't. Mark it, so a comma and but should be there. And further down on that same paragraph. Let's see, it was questioned why they need a forester come and mark it when they could get a well-known forester to do better. It just sounds funny, why do you need someone when you can get someone, both being forester?
It was supposed to be logger, I believe is what he said.
Okay, that would make more sense.
Yep.
And then down the next paragraph of Scott Welch. There are, there are a number of trees that are large instead of, there are a large number of trees that are large, use a large choice just isn't right.
You could substitute the first word, first large for big.
Yeah, you could do that.
Because it's a substantial amount of trees, or, you know, or use that word substantially.
There are a large number of trees that are big.
Yes.
Either way.
And then further it says, let's see, and will have to be dealt with. I don't think it means will have to be, I think it could be taken down and dealt with. I think there's too many words in there. Another circle here. Down in the last, under the select board comments. Go up three lines from the bottom. Shall the town of Castleton allot 3,000? Should it be allow 3,000? Or allot spelt differently than A-L-O-T?
It's allot, A-L-L-O-T.
So that's a misspelling.
Or appropriate.
You could use the word appropriate, it would be better.
And let's see.
That one will be one that's not on the, not included in the budget.
And then down the next line, it says our coons should be included in the warning. It should say our coons said it should be included in the warning. And that's it for me.
Rob, anything else?
Uh, page four on the bottom. Our steel stated he has spoken with Rick Pontello regarding the Crystal Beach Common Area. Their group has a few items to take care of. Wasn't their group that had a few items to take care of, I had a few things that I wanted to look at before I brought it to the board.
So their group should be...
Me. Rob has a few items to take care of.
Should take the group out.
Yep.
Okay.
Which I've sent to you earlier today.
I didn't read that. Anything else, Rob?
That's it.
Uh, page two, under Recreation Update. Last sentence, our steel thanked Mary Kay, I don't think you use a K, do you? And Rob McIntyre should be adjusted to Mary and Bob McIntyre. And that's it.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens comments, items not on the agenda. State your name, please.
Tom Hughes.
Tom Hughes. And what are we discussing, Mr. Hughes?
Ethan Allen in Castleton, May 9th this year.
I did send out an email with all the questions and my responses to some of this stuff. Uh-oh, OSHA, trip hazards.
This is the precedent. I was there to witness the event 50 years ago. This is the one 100 years ago. Federated church, town green, there's floats from the parade that had happened before, DAR float. This is a schoolhouse, a log cabin, a teepee.
That's 100 years ago, Tom?
Yes. So that was the 150th anniversary, this is the 250th anniversary of 1775. There's a fellow right there in a cap who used to be on the Castleton Select Board.
It's Jim Lee.
It's, uh, Bill, Bill Hart was his name there, and he was a real estate insurance guy, and he was on the Castleton Bicentennial Committee 50 years ago. So he was there for the 150th and the 200th. So that's the DAR float. They've got in the backseat George and Martha Washington, a couple of kids in wigs. So panoramic photograph. So basically, our proposed event that we're working on, for this May 9th, exactly 100 years later, is a lot like that one in that it's a parade followed by a program. And in our case, we want to do another panoramic photo, so basically get the whole town and all the guests in the same photo, probably higher quality so you can really make out who the faces are. We want to have, and this is in the works, a dramatization, basically a little play set in Zadig Remington's tavern at Castleton where the Green Mountain Boys have a council of war less than 24 hours before they take Fort Tecandroga. So Castleton, jumping off the launch pad for that stuff. So the business before you tonight is the 10 permissions that we're seeking that I've given you in writing. It was mentioned at a select board meeting a while back, you'd like to have a postal stamp, well, those are hard to come by, but we hope to get a cancellation, maybe have a postal substation so that during this public program from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., starting with the grade, that people would purchase the cancelled stamped envelope customized for the event. It's a collectible thing. There's 10 things listed here. I'm looking for a particular one. Oh, yeah. If they were numbered, it would be number six, the last one down that has two lines. And it says place lawn signs. What we mean by this would be pretty much same size, same design, same everything as campaign lawn signs that you see, only they would have a message to sort of affordably get people thinking and talking about this ahead of time. The message could be like this, why did Green Mountain Boys... Nope, that's the backside one. Why did Ethan Allen, why was Ethan Allen in Castleton 150 years ago, May 9? And then if you get really close to it, you know, this is something used to be, in small print it would say, to lead the Green Mountain Boys to capture Fort Tecandroga from the British before dawn the next day. Do you have any questions about these 10 things? We feel like to move ahead with this and schedule things and invite people to this, we need to know that, you know, you're comfortable with all that we require here.
So we can take a look at this and we can take action on it at the next select board meeting, but to expect us to go through this now is not realistic. Is that, is not realistic, to expect us to go through and act on all these 10 things right now.
Oh, no, I can say now.
Okay, all right. So we can take action sometime between now and the end of February, if that's adequate?
Yeah, I'll come to each meeting in case you have questions. I don't have all the select board emails.
They're on the website.
They are?
Yeah.
On the website, you can get them from Hannah at the town office tomorrow, no problem.
I can give you mine.
Well, if it's, I mean, I'll make a note, Tom, I can just send you an email, we'll do all their information on it.
Well, I'm just thinking, if you want to just, you know, at your convenience, email me if you have a question about, you know, how something would go.
Have you talked to the Lions Club?
Not yet, not yet. So we want to do a lot of things in Lions Club, so I could, but at Trotter building, location, obviously, and banner over the street, you know, like they do for their auction, announcing this event for a few weeks ahead. And of course, we need your permission to use their electrical hookup.
Okay, Tom, we're going to move on, but we'll, we will, I'm going to assign the homework of the select board members to go through this, and we'll be ready to discuss it at the next meeting.
Not a lot of homework.
Two, two things so far.
Yeah, I know, and we just started.
We're not done yet.
Is there a form for any of those permissions? Or is it all just...
I don't, I'm, I'm not even going to look at this right now. I'm going to look at it and I'll get you an answer, but I don't have one off the top of my head.
Well, for instance, does anybody know, does the American Legion get a permit to have their parade on Memorial Day? Do the Lions Club, do they need a permit to use the village green every year?
No, it's, everything's, everything's a motion presented to the select board. They make a motions in the minutes, but there's no formal process to request that stuff.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else under citizens' concerns? What's your name, John?
John Scarborough, Bonzine, Vermont. I spoke, I'm here tonight to have a report regarding the concerns, issues with the Castleton volunteer fire department where I was a member for a year and a half. I've spoke to everybody here, including Bobby on the phone. I think we're all pretty much aware of what went on, what went down. I've got a report here that I'm going to give, that I'd like you guys to look at, consider what's in the report, at this time, how it's affecting the town of Castleton's fire safety, and the money and the budget that's being spent on the fire department. These concerns are concerns that I actually dealt with in the year and a half that I was there. There, I know I got one here for you, Mary. I'm asking the select board to look into this, I don't know if you guys have already done it or not, I haven't seen it in the minutes, but the fire department elected their new officials, leadership, a month ago. I don't know if that's been approved yet.
I know, it just has not.
I'd not, I'd like to ask the select board to hold off acknowledging that and approving that until the, some of these concerns, issues are resolved. Everybody's got my phone number, I'm available by phone, I would love to come in at some point in time and talk with the select board, not only about these issues in executive session, but also the accusation, the false accusation that was...
And we're not going to get into that right now.
I want to talk on executives, I'm not going to get into it, but I want to go in executive session, I would like to know who the individuals were that made those false accusations that turned out to be just what they were, false accusations.
We can get into that during an executive session.
Yep, yep.
All right?
Okay.
And we'll look at this and we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thanks, John.
Thanks, John, thank you.
Anything else?
Mary McIntyre, Castleton, Vermont, Vice President of the Friends of Castleton Parks and Recreation. Just a couple updates. As you are all aware, the President Andy Familiar and I came to you to ask permission to go ahead for fundraising for, to update the county floor, and we are progressing with that, we have a committee. Our rec director, selectman Dick Combs, and citizen Rick Waring are on the committee, and I will also be assisting with that as the liaison between the committee and President Rec. And we'll have somebody come in. The very first, we found three businesses that do gym floors in the area, and we'll have the first one come in on Wednesday. One other update that you may not have been aware of, I reached out to local businesses to kind of let them be aware of not only who we are, and that we may be in contact with them to sponsor different events, but also that we would like to let them know when events are going on at the Rec Center, so that they can maybe have some kind of specials or something after games to help promote their businesses. And I have had a reach back from Castleton Pizza House and Deli, and they are having a February, month of February, they're going to have a Cuban cocktails, drink specials. And for every one of these specials that they sell, one dollar will go to friends of them. So that's kind of fun for businesses and us. Also, our series of eight open gyms were completed, fairly well attended. I believe we've talked before that some of what we're doing with recreation overall is going to have to reshape people's thinking that, yep, there are things to do here in town, and they'll have to look at the calendar and, and look at Facebook and look at the ads and, and read the articles to find out in Lakeside News to see what is happening, but things are happening. And now we're looking ahead, the same volunteers plus some are looking ahead at what we can possibly do over the kids next school vacation, and of course, we'll be running all that time.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Anything else under citizens' concerns or comments? Chief Mandello, you're up.
We gotta do the town meeting date, don't we?
Oh, that's right, yeah. I'm sorry, chief. Thank you, Rob. So it has been suggested and proposed that since the rules for pre-town meeting have changed this year, and we can have the pre-town meeting in, more than one day ahead of time, we can have the pre-town meeting up to 30 days ahead of time. It's been suggested that we have the pre-town meeting two weeks ahead of time at the same place, on the same day, or the same day of the week, on Monday, but have it on February 17th instead, so that we can take the opportunity to make the Zoom recording and if PEG TV comes, make that recording available to the public, so more people can hear what was said and what was decisions made during the pre-town meeting, and hopefully disseminate the information better, and give people more opportunity. So as, we have checked in the Jeffords, right, Jeffords?
Eric.
Herrick Auditorium is available for February 17th. So I would suggest that we consider moving the pre-town meeting from March 3rd to February 17th. Is there any thoughts on that?
Does the fact that that's President's Day make any difference?
I doubt it.
I just looked to see if I had anything.
I doubt it, it's, it's, you know, everyone has to go to work that following Tuesday, so I doubt it, you know, I don't think a significant amount of people will be out of town. For me, the President's Day is just another day in the shop, usually.
School, school vacation week.
Is it? Well, that's my suggestion, Board, I don't know if you want to do anything or not. If we do nothing, then we'll have it on March 3rd. That date is also available, correct?
Correct.
You said it could be up to 30 days?
It could be.
Would it be more conducive to getting information out if it wasn't on the kids' vacation week because they may be away? Just a thought.
I'm not sure if it's going to be available, so whatever decision you make tonight, I'm going to have to go back and check with the university to make sure it's available. So if you make a decision and I call tomorrow and we get an answer tomorrow, it might not be available on the date you want.
It's probably one of the reasons it is available, is that it's President's Day.
I doubt less people will show up on President's Day than they do at the normal one, because we normally get 80 people.
Get enough anyway.
But this allows the recording to be done early enough to get it out to...
Maybe we can reach more people that wouldn't necessarily have been there to begin with.
They don't have to go to town meeting to still hear what got said, and it gives them a chance to call, they're, they're your constituents, so they can reach out to you if they have a question in enough time to get an answer versus doing it the night prior.
And in particular, also, not just the Zoom recording, but getting, if PEG TV is not always available on pre-town meeting, that's a pretty busy night for them. Whereas if the 17th, the odds of getting one of, one of this gentleman's, either him or one of his buddies, to come and record the meeting and get it on their website are much better. Now, once again, we can't commit to that until we know the date, and then we can ask them if they can come and record it. So it's one of those...
I think it's worth a shot to try something new, I mean, we're only getting 80 people anyway.
When is your next paper published after February 17th?
After February 17th?
Yep, that's on Monday.
25th?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, to give those opportunities to disseminate the information.
I, I thought it was when it was, when Mike brought it up to me that the possibility existed, after Nedra got the new rules and we realized that this was an option.
Right.
We thought it might be a good one, so...
If everybody hates it, we can always change back next year, but if we don't try it, we'll never know. Right.
I have no problem with it, I was just questioning.
Well, your, your concerns are valid, but I, I don't, personally, I don't think it's going to have a, that, those two issues, I don't think will have a great impact on, how do I say this, the, most of the people who show up for the pre-town meeting, or a good share of the people that show up for pre-town meeting don't have elementary ages, or don't have kids in school. Do you think that's a fair statement?
Yeah, I think it is. I think you're right.
So I don't think that's relevant. Now, President's Day, that's, once again, the people that have to work have to go to work Tuesday, so...
Yeah, but if they go a long weekend, I don't know that it'd make that much difference.
I, I...
Four or three people, maybe?
Well, I'm, to be honest, I didn't think about it being President's Day, but I'm still thinking it's worth a try.
Not that many people get that day off.
I never did.
Federal holidays, but that's about it.
But it... I was always private sector, I never worked for Republic Kennedy, and when I was in the Navy, we didn't get holidays, so...
What do they?
But if...
Well, you did, if you were in, or, and you were in standout.
If they can't make it on the 17th, then at least the recording's going to be available so that they can watch it.
Agreed.
Anytime.
At their convenience.
Which would be better if they couldn't make it the day bef, you know, the night before, anyway, they're going to miss it and they have absolutely zero opportunity of hearing anything, so... I'd make a motion that we hold the town meeting on 2/17 at the Herrick Auditorium.
What time?
Can you amend that to pre-town meeting?
I would make a motion that we approve the pre-town meeting for 2/17, the Stafford Academic Center Herrick Auditorium, room 146. What time is it usually, 7?
6:30.
Set 6:30.
I'll second it.
I'm moved and seconded, we move the pre-town meeting to the date and time that Rob described in his motion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go on to Chief Mandello.
Good evening. Evening. It was a heat wave today, we got up to 35.
And then the wind blew.
Well, except for the wind wave.
It was a little press. The Crystal Beach.
All right, so you all got a copy of the report, correct?
Yes.
So we're going to go through that, November, December, I mean, December, since December, give the comparison on November. Calls, you know, was it 598 and November 596. Nothing stands out except our theft of automobiles that we've had a run on here, and we have three more in December. And I did put that out on my, on the website last week to really emphasize, just don't leave your keys in the car. I mean, all these vehicles were taken with the keys in the car, I don't know why. So they didn't break in anything or...
Are they stealing things, or is it just...
There's some items that were taken, absolutely.
And they burned one car?
That would be in the January report, so yes, there was a, there was a fourth car that's not mentioned here that just occurred about, see, we could go Monday, that was taken and the car was found in Pittsburgh, it was burned, ditched, called Town Hill Road.
People were watching too much Yellowstone.
Don't know. That was, that was a little unusual, because all the other cars were just basically moving to town and just on the farm on a different street, maybe West Rock, fully intact.
But not hurt.
Not, not damaged. We do have, obviously, some, one of the, two of the vehicles that were taken, we do have some suspects. We sent some lab evidence up there for DNA testing, we'll see what that comes back to, if that comes back to a non-controlled piece of evidence that it's not the owner, it's not their family, and then we'll hopefully do what we call a non testimonial order and order to get it on the suspects. It's worth a try. But I can't emphasize enough, we, this past week, we had people stay over an extra hour. I went in on Saturday night till Sunday morning, worked a couple, a couple, two and a half hours, just pounding the roads. I did come across somebody on South Street, I see a vehicle running, so I sat over by trail, they had the farm stand, I'm watching it, so finally I just said, you know, I'm just going to go up there and maybe catch him in the car. It turns out to be, you know, one of the people that you gave me on South Street that saw a couple people that Tuesday after, after that. He was just starting his car, he was heading to work, so...
Are these typically happening after officers sign off?
Yeah, yeah. Usually anywhere from 3:30 to 5:00. So my guys have been standing till 3:00, we had a couple people stay till 4:00, some of us came in early, just trying to balance it out, really just doing directed patrols in those areas, and haven't, this, now, since last Wednesday, we haven't had any reports. So, it's frustrating. Well, we do have a plan, we do have plans. I won't mention our secret squirrel plan, but we do have a plan.
Is it mainly in what area, this is all that we...
Uh, Blissville, South Street, the one that was burned, the car came out of 30 South, just, just below Ryder, south of Ryder.
But in every case, the keys were left in the car and the car was unlocked.
All, yeah, yeah. We do have video footage of the people, but you can't really make out who they are, you know, the fully... You know, they're fully dressed, got the mask on.
One of the things I want to address about is, is there any associated break-ins or burglaries of homes associated with this as well?
No.
So just targeting the cars?
Cars right now.
I know you got a call today. It was on Blissville.
Yeah, that was unusual. That was a, it was a daytime, uh, the empty house on Blissville 310. The guy had an alarm and a camera and as soon as he hit the alarm, the guy took off.
This is at 10 o'clock in the morning though?
I know. You were in my office when it happened. Boy down there, nothing was taken. Got the video footage. Once he, once he came across the, the camera and the alarm, which is really good, the guy just looked at it and just turned around. He had a full mask on, like all the way up to here.
At 10 o'clock in the morning?
10 o'clock in the morning. I don't know if they're related to the car thing. It could be, it's an empty house, but pretty bracing in the daytime. So...
You have to keep an eye on squatters too in those vacant homes.
Yeah, that's what you got to watch out to. All right, so... Let's move on there. So the calls, so we talked with the criminal arrest. We did make 11 last month, up by four. One was the, the mental health warrant that had to do with involving any mental health person in this town. Petty larcenies. Traffic violations. Stayed about, pretty close to same. We've been averaging, you know, anywhere from 120 to 150. So we got 123. It was cold for about two weeks. We really didn't get out there too much. Calls of the university, they were mostly at break for December, except the first part. We did have one call there, just a minor accident. Backup provided by CPD in December, you had four, two in Fairhaven, two in Colton. And if you read the notes, um, you kind of want more detail of, you know, the noise complaints. We did issue, uh, three ordinances in December for off-campus violation for noise ordinances. That ends up to break down the county or statistics by increases. Some of those, you know, they, they say a higher increases. It's, it's not by a lot, so we're talking, it's not like it was like 100 calls more, or I should say 100 calls, but these, these other crimes that are listed there, like quality of life arrests. What do you think those are?
Beats me.
Noise, disorderlies, stuff like that.
I was going to say you're checking on old people like you to make sure they're behaving.
Streaking. Going down to the quad, Mary Lee. We're going to the quad.
So, uh, Justin did do a, applied for the, for Homeland Security. We're looking at getting new radios to update our equipment. Castle of Meadows, checked them. I did do a presentation to the senior center at their luncheon on fraud, which was well taken. Cause we do see that, people getting, uh, still getting contacted, so I gave them some resources, kind of went over some stuff that they should do with their phones and computers. Property checks. There was a highway safety campaign that was during Christmas and New Year's. It was a little, a little over a week. Tells you what we wrote. Mental health, that, that took a lot. It takes a lot of time doing those. And then we did the Christmas food boxes. What was that? Oh, we did the, the Christmas food boxes.
Oh, yep.
We do Castle of Cares in Christmas. You do like 34, 4 to 4, it really depends on who's around. Any questions?
I don't know. You're going to stick around though, right?
Yes, I am, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
This one's going to be a tough one. Rotary Club requests for use of Crystal Beach. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We grant the Psychicalary and Rotary Club permission to use Crystal Beach for their annual ice fishing duty.
I'll second it.
Should you have the date? Which is the weekend after the Lions Club?
22nd, 23rd.
I don't think it needs to be in the motion. It's on the letter.
Okay.
Any more discussion? I'm assuming they have all their insurances in place and et cetera, or they will, or they do?
Yeah, that's something that, um, we just dealt with the Lions Club, uh, with Stan. He came in. We issued the keys to him and he did tell me that, um, probably Dave Calvi will be coming by to, after they're done, to get the keys. But they, they're up there, they're up there today. They got power, um, so they're all set with, you know, the Lions Club, but we'll follow up with, uh, with Fairhaven, with the Rotary, um, to make sure they got everything they need up there and we'll give them the keys as well.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Blade. I think you're up, Mike.
Jeff's on, yeah.
I was looking for Jeff.
No, um, so I went up to the garage today to get an idea of what they were looking at for this, um, these blades. And those Saber Blades, the, the board had approved them in the past, um, as a kind of a sole source thing. Those, these are the ones that, they last longer. So I said, ah, I'm going to go look at them. So I took a picture of them if anybody wants to see them. That, the blades that are on the Dodge Ram, those Saber Blades, are the ones that came on that truck. So we've been plowing three years with that, those blades, and they, we're just replacing them. So they definitely, they, they've lived up to what they tout, um, as far as the, the longevity and durability of them. So, um, they sold me on it because if we can get three years out of a set of blades, that's pretty good. And that truck goes out just as much as anybody else, any other truck there. So I would recommend that, um, not having three quotes, because these are, this is like a sole source thing, that, uh, the board approved the, those Saber Blades because they've proven their worth.
What truck is this for?
The Dodge Ram.
Okay. Because we approved blades earlier in the year for another one of the trucks, right?
Yeah.
And we put the Saber ones on that one?
Correct.
And they've held up good?
Yeah.
Okay.
These are the ones that cost 20% more and last 50% longer?
Yeah, probably more than 50% longer. You're just talking a year, like a plow year. But if, could you...
Weren't those an option on the truck we just ordered?
Um, off the top of my head, Mark, I don't know. I, I believe that they said they wanted the Saber Blade, so it probably was an option on that, on purchase order.
Okay. I was thinking it was an option that we didn't take.
Um, I don't, I'd have to research that. I apologize. Off the top of my head, I'm... But I wanted to, I got, I got an email from the DPW foreman for the Saber Blades. It's $245 added to this for shipping, which wasn't on there. So I'm just going to add up what the new total would be. I get 3957.30.
That's what I got.
So that, that would, that would be the, that counts the shipping, so if that could be included in the motion, if you approve it, then that covers the shipping.
It's a pleasure, Board.
We'll make a motion if you want. I mean, if they last longer and they're cheaper, or not cheaper, but if it's worth the money, then we'll just go with them.
I think it's a little more cost effective opt, option.
Yeah. I would make a motion to approve the purchase of Saber Plow Blades and Hardware from Chiemong Supply Corporation, um, for the sum of 3,950, with shipping, for the sum of $3,957.30.
I got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passive grant application of, no, annual tax map maintenance is next.
Let me read again.
That would be you.
All right. This is an annual, uh, cost. The only thing is that the $3,900, um, it's up $400 from the, from last year. So it went from 35 to 39. That, I went back to the assessor's, uh, budget page, sat down with Mary Jo, and I added that $400 into that, so it shows that, because there's two charges. We have the map system, um, and then the software, uh, maintenance and stuff. So one's 3,000, one's 3,900, so it's $6,900 total. And that is reflected in the assessor's budget line. So it's, we don't, we can't do business without it. So I'd ask that the board approve it with the $400 increase over the previous year.
That's for 3900?
3,900, yeah. That'll go to the last page. Yeah, the cost for the mapping services, $3,900. I lined out the building footprints, that $20 per building, uh, that was been questioned, Joe Mark used to question that. We don't do that, so I lined it out, so it wasn't even on the contract.
It's on the last one. It's on pay an additional $20, building added or changed.
Yeah, where's that one?
It's right on the contract, the last page that you have to sign.
I'll align it off that one too.
Number two, second one down in number two.
Okay, I'm going to line it off it, so when it goes back, I won't have it on there.
Do that on this original one?
If, yeah, if I could.
We're not going to sign something that's not done.
Cause I didn't line out the last part. Said there will be no additional charge if property records cards are not provided. We're not going to provide them, so...
So we need to call a vote before we sign it, Mark.
He said he wanted a motion.
More discussion on this? We have a motion in a second to approve this. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I missed who the motions were made by.
I don't remember making.
Yeah, I don't think there was a motion.
I don't think you did.
Oh, we didn't do a motion?
No.
I thought...
Not for this one.
Okay, then I'll, we'll start over. We'll lay my list.
Sure, Chuck and Mark.
Okay, I make a motion, uh, we approve $3,900 for, uh, annual tax map maintenance proposal.
With CAI, I think it's CAI Technologies, right? CAI Technologies?
See, to CAI Technologies in Littleton, Hampshire.
I'll second that.
Moved in second and any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you can start the party this time, Mike or Mark.
While they're passing around, can I address the board?
Sure.
Uh, I did meet with, um, the, John from the appraisal, appraisal company and Mary Jo this week. They would like to come to the next meeting to provide you an update on where they're at with the reappraisals, answer any questions, and give you a little four-page PowerPoint presentation of stats. But he said he'd like to have 20 to 30 minutes to do it. To offer questions as well, because I imagine there's going to be some questions. But are you, is the board up for having them hear the next meeting?
No.
Well, we have to make sure the agenda reflects the use of that time so that we don't have an 11 o'clock meeting if we can avoid it.
Well, that's what I was talking with.
Nothing else needs to come up between now and then.
Right, I know.
Could we ask for a condensed version?
Certainly. I mean, we're, you're in the driver's seat. I can tell him he's got 15 minutes or 10 minutes and they'll have to tailor his briefing to, to that. It's just when questions start, you have to...
I think it would be nice if we had that information.
I was going to say, could I do the presentation ahead of time so that we could view it?
He's going to provide, I did tell him that I need it for the packets, so you'll get it ahead of, you'll get the stuff, because it's going to be a PowerPoint, so there's no, he's not going to air it.
And is, he said to allow 20 to 30 minutes?
Yeah.
How long of that is his brief? And the rest of it is questions?
Probably half of it's a brief.
All right, so... Yeah, if he can, um, if he can hold it to a maximum of 20 minutes.
Yeah, that's okay. But, so next meeting is good though?
I think it's, whoever, I think it was Mark that raised the point, if we had this done before pre-town meeting, that would help us. And if the questions come up, we at least have the information in our heads and available to us.
Yeah, just keep kicking it down the road.
Well, I, I met with him and Mary Jo and I had questions prepared for him. He answered, I would say probably 75%, seven, seven out of 10, he probably answered. There was a couple that he needed to go back to provide, you know, do some research, but one of the big things, and I think this would be of a point of interest, would be how many homes have they actually been inside of? Because the contract that was signed does not say a specific, like 10%, 20%, it just said reasonable amount. So reasonable to him was like 20 to 30%. Reasonable to Mary Jo was like 70 to 80%. So there were, there's nothing binding them in the contract. That's the, the state said that, and their guidance was 90%. And he basically said, how many people have told us no? So it's, it's, it might set a percentage, but it's all going to be based on how people react to when you ask them to go in their home. But we've heard a lot of folks say, no one's even called me. No one's asked me to go.
I saw them backing out of my driveway one day.
Yeah, that's what, the last, they went from like 500 to 1,400 and some odd in a week. And so we know that there are a lot of them are probably drive-bys. So...
I got a visit. They asked if anything changed. I said no, and they said, all right, see you.
Well, like I said, I just saw them backing out of my driveway. They weren't, the vehicle was marked well and there was no doubt who it was. But, uh, that's what I saw. It was, you know, I was coming out of my shop and they were backing out of the driveway.
So you were home?
I was home. I was in my shop.
We know this is going to be contentious. And the way, at the end, if you don't let them in your home and you grieve what the assessment is, through its evolution, eventually, when it, if it much goes to the BCA, BCA is going to say, we have to come in your home, but it, or else they're going to dismiss the grievance. So in the end, it could, you have to let them in the house anyway if you're going to, if you don't like...
Do they have any samples for us, like of how much it's, you know, what they've done so far, like any idea of, you know, this house appraised at X and now we're appraising it here? Like to give us a rough idea of how much the increase or decrease?
They have it by area too.
Yeah.
So yes, they can provide that grant, that, down to that granular lever, level.
Obviously, I'm not asking to the penny here, but just a general idea that this zone increased an average of 25%.
All right, so we're agreed that that's going to be on the next agenda and it's not on this agenda, so we're going to move on?
Yep.
Passive grant application approval. Mike, you're up.
Okay. I gave you a copy of the application and it also, um, on the latter pages of it, it gives you examples of what you can apply for and what you cannot apply for. We typically, um, it's a 50% match. Typically, the police department, this is where they get their body cams from. Our body cams aren't, don't require cloud service or anything. They're, they're, they can be downloaded, the video footage, so they're cheaper cameras, but they're, they're good enough quality. Uh, but that's how, uh, Justin, when he applies for the grant, gets their cameras. We, we buy signed packages for, uh, the highway wastewater, so when they're out working, they're OSHA compliant. Cause everything that this grant, uh, is supposed to be geared towards is safety and reducing injuries and workers comp claims and OSHA violations and that kind of stuff.
So the cameras, this year, we're looking at adding three surveillance cameras at the beach and two more down at the wastewater facility. I was at both places today with Royals group, looking at ideal locations where, where the Wi-Fi connections or the internet connections are. So that's how we've put all of the surveillance cameras for every facility we have, has been through this grant. So this is just a continuation of, of that, to finally get the ones at the beach. One of the things I, and I hope the, I'll say it, maybe the board will agree or disagree, but I kept away, the cameras away from the beach, like looking directly at the beach, because that could be misconstrued with, so it'll be almost to that, but the playground, the bathrooms, out in the, like the outside looking, so we know if any breaks in, we can see them, and the overhead door, and then the snack shack and the storage shed. So with those cameras, we should get good coverage, and they're, the cameras are like $250 apiece. They're not real expensive, but they, they work. I mean, as far as recording, if somebody tries to get in a building, unless they're masked up and that kind of stuff, but you can't see license plates and that stuff from a distance, but, but it's a deterrent for one. And if we ever had to pull camera footage, we might be able to catch something. So that's what we're looking at for this year. Majority was cameras, body, the body cams. We've, we've used it, we've got a lot of the other stuff, like tripods and safety harnesses and all that stuff through this grant. So I think we're good. I just need permission from the board that we're gonna basically have to pay 50% of the $5,000 grant. We're in that range, we're, we're eligible for the $5,000.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Anyone willing to make a motion to authorize this?
I would make a motion to authorize, who does that, who does it, Justin?
Yes.
I would make a motion to authorize Justin.
Shraico.
Shraico to apply for the 2025 passive grant.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Discussion about the constable position. So you have in your packet a possibility of three different things that we could do or we could do nothing? Just so everyone is aware, if they're not, Mr. Loomis, Constable Loomis is not going to run for reelection. So therefore, we would have to either appoint or seek someone to run for constable, or not have a constable at all, except for a couple of duties that the constable is responsible for, which, could you enumerate those, please?
Sure. If, if the constable, if you, if the voters vote, if the ballot article reads that there's no law enforcement authority that comes with a constable position, then by statute, if they vote on it, then they're limited to civil service or civil process, like serving papers, destruction of animals in accordance with state statute, killing of injured deer per state statute, assist, provision of assistance to the health officer, and the discharge of the health officer's duties per statute, and service as a criminal division of the superior court officer per, per this title of, it's 24 VSA 1936A, Constables, Powers and Qualifications, and removal of disorderly people from town meeting, and collection of taxes when no tax collector is elected, as provided under the section 1529 of this title. So that, that's what they're limited to with no law enforcement authority. And with a full-time police department and a liability that comes with an elected position like this, there's no oversight by the select board, by the police chief, by me, because he's, they're elected, and they have, they have to, you know, follow the law by themselves, but they could do what they want, basically. As far as, they wanna work 25 hours, they wanna work, you know, the only thing that the select board really has control over is the power of the purse. And if you limit the budget, then if they wanna go and say, "I want $50 an hour," and the budget's $1,000, at 20 hours, there, there's no more money. So that's, I spoke to the league, I spoke to Trevor, Trevor Whipple at the league in particular, former law enforcement officer, police chief, and I think I shared some of that with you. So there is less liability. But if you don't, if the, if you put it on the ballot and you ask the voters to eliminate the office of constable, then the select board's bound at that point to appoint a town officer to discharge the constable's duties, if any, subject to that VSA, 24 VSA 13, no, 1936A, that's the constable stuff, exercising only those duties that are non-law enforcement in nature. That's, so the, the language that I, that I put in the warning has two different versions. And I, so the paper I provided you are the two different options, and, or the third one being, you propose your own language, or, but the fact that, that this has to be on the warning for nether tomorrow, if you want this on the ballot, then it has to be decided on which language you want tonight.
Question. If we do not have a constable, would Pete or one of his men be at town meeting to oversee if somebody gets mouthy and moved out? But isn't that almost something a police officer should do?
Yeah, the police, the police chief goes here, but, but remember, I, what's not in here, Mary Lee, and, or to the board, I mean, is when, if you eliminate the office of the constable and you have to appoint a town officer, you could appoint somebody like the police chief to be that town officer. So they, they already have law enforcement authority, anyway. So if it's limited to non-law enforcement, then the police chief and his, his whim, or his, his discretion would exercise those items that I read off in there, like dispatching of deer, being at town meeting, civil, civil process, that stuff.
Can I just ask the police chief a question? If we elected to propose this to the voters, and they allowed us to eliminate the position of constable, would you be willing to accept that appointment to discharge the duties of constable, other than law enforcement?
I would.
And would you, legally, you can delegate that to your officers, I believe?
Correct.
Therefore, I think a position of constable is redundant in this town.
Correct.
That's only my opinion. So.
So then we should go with, if that's what the board chooses, then we should go with number one here on the, shall the town, shall the town eliminate the office of constable, the select board shall appoint a town officer to discharge the constable's duties, if any?
But it's not, it's not our, it's our decision on what we propose to the voters.
Correct. I think that we should choose, I think we should choose the first, the first one.
I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I would make a motion that we use the proposed language of, shall the town eliminate the office of constable, the select board shall appoint a town officer to discharge the constable's duties, if any, subject to 24 VSA 1936A, exercising only those duties that are non-law enforcement in nature.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the, the downstream effect of this one is when, when you come to the warning, there's four versions of the warning, so we just have to pick the, the one that fits this one here, so. And I'll, I'll, I'll guide you through it, because I wrote them, so I'll make sure we pick the right one, or I picked the right one for you to approve, that matched what you're saying here.
We gotta revisit the operating budget. The constable's position has been eliminated. There's a few other changes as well. Well, not eliminated, but the constable budget is reduced significantly to $1,000.
What page is that one on?
It's near transfer station.
Somewhere around page 10, but I don't remember for sure. Maybe more like page eight. It's before highway.
It's, um, page 12, very bottom of page 11. So that reduced the budget by 19,000 change. $19,745.
So what we would have to do if we approve this budget is we have to rescind the vote from.
Was that the only change in this budget?
No, there was, um, the assessor's budget, I went back and looked at that mapping stuff and made the changes to the assessor's part of it.
Added the, what was it, 400?
Right. The transfer station, there was a couple of things that were small that were, I, I found an error, was double reading a cell on that budget for like $4,000, for the, it was the insurance buyout, one of the insurance buyouts. But I don't, I apologize, I did not bring the old one, oh, hold on, maybe you did.
Well, the old number was $4,413,072. The new number is 400, $4,410,509. So it's approximately 300, or $3,000 less.
Is the net change.
So I, I did share with you that I, I, when I took the constable stuff out, that was $19,745. Then I had to add the insurance back into one of the vacancy at the highway garage, because it was listed as a one-person plan, but we don't budget for, when there's vacancies, we budget for a two-person plan. So, because it, going from a one-person plan to a family plan's a large jump. From a single plan to a two-person plan was 15,000. So we saved 19 something from the constable, but then all of a sudden, the 15 gets tossed in there, plus, so that was a $4,000-ish dollar change. But then, so it ended up with a $3,000 difference in this thing, is, because a couple of them, like the assessor one, I think I even reduced, oh, look at the animal control and the tree wardens, those were changed by a couple hundred dollars. So that's why it sugared off to be about 3,000.
So on December 23rd, Mr. Brown made a motion to approve the budget, and Mr. Spalding seconded it. So we'd have to rescind that motion and present a new motion to approve this budget. Rescind or withdraw? I think rescind is the right word.
I think rescind since it was approved.
Say again?
Can you rescind it without Bob?
As long as the majority of the board agrees to it, yes.
And I did provide a sheet here with the social services and stuff, just so you know, because that stuff's not included in the budget and the reserve account stuff, but that's a separate sheet. Hopefully, you'll have it in your packet. Because I, at the bottom, at the very back page of this, the budget work, the workbook, I'm sorry, I lied to you. It's, I, I hid some cells, so it took those out. But I, it went from, if you add that stuff in there, that $210,000, or it comes up to be like 9.6% increase. So you got 4.4 as presented here. If you, if, if you add that other stuff in there, it goes to 9.6. Just so you're, if you wanted to know numbers. Correct.
So what's your budget, board?
Yeah, I mean, anytime we can make the budget left, it's a bonus, so, or less, it's a bonus.
Mark, do you have a copy of these minutes?
I do. No, there should be, the things I handed out, Mark, there was three things. I have a copy right here. Okay.
So to move forward, we'd have to do one of two things, either agree not to do anything and leave the current budget as it stands, or we rescind that budget and approve this one.
Yeah, I would make a motion that I rescind the motion that I made on, what was the date of this?
It should be the bottom.
December 23rd, 2024, to approve the '25, '26 draft budget for $4,417,072. And $74,413,072.
I have a motion in a second to rescind the first draft approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want me to do it?
It's on page 16. You're ready to go, Rob.
I would make a motion to approve the '25, '26 budget draft for $4,410,509, which is an increase of 4.4%.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revised draft budget. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good work, Mike.
That's it, right? That's the last, last chance we got.
Do you want to go home now?
Mike, nice job. Thank you very much for all your effort.
Thank you. I cried over the weekend, but, oh, I got it. I'm like, 19,000! Oh, 15,000 I did.
You said that quiet before you went further.
No, before my computer.
I can deal with that on Monday.
Seen a few town managers go through this process, and I know it's not easy to get this all done.
That spreadsheet's a beast, man.
To come up with something that's actually realistic and palatable at the same time is not easy. So now, if we want to briefly discuss the ballot articles that are not included in the budget, we have a list here, and these are the ones that we, the only new one on this is the Slate Valley Cares for $3,000. Everything else did not require a petition, I believe?
Boys and Girls Club.
Boys and Girls Club, is that new as well?
That's new. So both of them had submitted a petition for those, that $3,000 for Slate Valley Cares and $5,000 for Boys and Girls Club. Those are new.
Okay.
I really don't understand Slate Valley Cares versus Castleton Cares. They both seem to be the same.
Two different organizations.
I know, but two different organizations, though.
With a similar.
Do we need both?
Except one only cares about Castleton, the other one is everywhere.
There's a substantial, I'm fairly, I'm not act, as active as my, as my spouse, who is quite active in Slate Valley Cares, and there's a substantial amount of Castleton residents who take advantage of their, their help.
So, yeah, they're not just Castleton, they're the whole surrounding area.
Right. They don't even, don't hold me to this, but I, I think that they don't even care about the state line. If you need help, you get it.
Well, you can't, a Castleton resident can use both. They don't, they don't keep the tab on, you don't believe, that, you know, you, you're over in Castleton.
I think that there's a difference in the way they're operated. I guess I shouldn't say that. I don't wanna say something I'm not 100% sure of.
I, I just know that I'm not, I don't have a problem supporting both.
Yeah, both groups are helping people, so.
That's only my.
Okay, I was just asking the question.
I don't think it's redundant.
And we don't actually have a choice, right? If they're.
Yeah, they petitioned it, and they got enough votes, so.
Yeah, we're, we're obligated to put this on the warning, whether we like it or not.
Right, we're not voting on it. They meet the requirements, we have to put it on the.
The only thing we're here, doing here is discussing this. We have, you know, by, by our own policy, that this board has, our previous board has approved these other Castleton cares and community seniors, et cetera, do not have to re-petition unless they change their dollar amount. So at this point in time, we are obligated to put these on the warning.
In a perfect world, at town meeting, someone will question what each one of those organizations does with their money, and there'll be a representative there to stand up and say, "This is what we do," so it'll be clear. Because it is, oftentimes, people just vote all these in without knowing who the money is going to, and it adds up to a substantial amount of money, looking at, what, an additional 61,000.
Would kind of be nice to know, you know, exactly what they do.
I know that there's been at least, on most of the town meetings I've been to, there's at least, well, there's one regular. at least, well, there's one regular, um, that's for the Castleton Community Seniors. Joanne Riley's always there to speak to it. And then there's at least one or two other entities that are there, at least, there could be more, I honestly don't keep track.
Mr. Chairman. What I can do is, um, have Hannah reach out to all of them and just a, a quick, which we, they send us by email, most of them, um, is send out and say, love to have you, now that we have a date, and invite them there. I'll have Hannah do that.
No, you don't, they don't have to repetition unless they change the amount of what they want.
I believe that's correct.
That's correct.
And that was the previous board set that policy. I think I was, it's been since I've been on the board. I've been on the board, what, probably ten years? Be my guess. So sometime in the last ten years, we made that change.
I've been on the board fifty years, it feels like.
I've been on the board at least a week longer than you, right?
Okay.
Um, so, um, unless there's any more discussion, we're gonna move on, but that's, those are the items that are not in the budget, along with the three reserve account.
Now.
Articles.
How, maybe he's got it further. How are you putting the reserve accounts on, on the?
We're gonna talk about that in the next item on the agenda when we do the draft warning. Well, you can open it very shortly, that's the next item on the agenda. Any more discussion on this? Mark or Rob?
No, I'm good.
So now we're gonna talk about the, uh, draft warning. Cause we have to approve a draft, we have to approve a warning tonight so that, uh, our town staff can, uh, create the town report and our town clerk can generate a ballot. So Mike, I'll let you just describe to us briefly what the, uh, what the options are here.
Yeah, I'm looking at, um, it's gonna be obviously one of the February ones, um, and I believe it's option two, thirty, article thirty-nine, just so we know we're on the right one. The language that you agreed to for the constables, um, matches up, I believe. There's, there's just one extra sentence at the end, and I, when we get to that one, uh, Mr. Chairman, like, if you, we can take a line out of there if you want to, but, so shall the town eliminate the, like, the constable, select board, appoint a town officer to discharge the duties, if any, subject to exercising, no, see, that's not the same exact language. Sorry, just make sure. So it'd be option number, uh, February option number one. For the, that deals with article number thirty-nine. That's the language. The only thing that's on article thirty-nine that's, that I took from the statute is after it says, the second, um, line of that paragraph, where it ends twenty-four VSA, um, thirteen, or nineteen thirty-six A, the next sentence says, the town officer shall proceed in the discharge of the constable's duties that do not require law enforcement authority in the same manner and subject to the same liabilities that are established by law for constables. It, it was in the, it was in the, the language in the statute, so I added it here. If you so choose, we can strike that out of there and make it shorter, but it was, I was trying to clarify that, that person that gets appointed, the town officer gets appointed, still has to, um, discharge the duties of constable, not law enforcement related, in the same manner that's in there for constables.
So what if we stop that, that last sentence at the first comma and put a period in there instead and struck the rest of it? Is that too brief? For the town officer shall proceed in the discharge of the constable duties that do not require law enforcement authority, period?
It, it's kind of half of the, the thought on it, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not passionate either way, Mr. Chairman, um, cause up top it does say, in the first part of it, it says, the discharge of constable's duties that do not require law enforcement authority, if any. So, I don't know, maybe it's not even worth the second half if you're not gonna include it all. It just might be more confusing to people if there's more verbiage there.
Just leave it as shall the town eliminate the election for the office of constable.
Well, you have to include there, if, but it says in the statute, if you do not want them to have law enforcement authority, has to be stated, so.
We, we also have to have the voters authorize us to appoint an off, a town official to do that.
So you could stop after nineteen thirty-six A and strike everything after that.
Let's do that.
I agree. It makes it look more legal when you're voting a statute.
Maybe stop there, at that first period. Let's do that, Mike.
Okay. So everything else on here, um, you know, I don't think you have highlighted anything in yellow, but the, on this one, be gray. Those are the articles that were the added for the reserve accounts. The fir, so number thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, um, reflect those reserve account increases or additions. And then article thirty-eight, um, was to establish a reserve, um, for small tools and equipment, uh, capital reserve stuff for the Castleton first response, for Castleton first response, to replace critical public safety and critical life-saving tools and equipment. We did it for the fire station. I was supposed to do it last year for Castle, ask you guys to put it on the ballot last year, and I forgot. I dropped the ball on that one, so.
Should it have a dollar amount?
You can't, you gotta establish the reserve first, and then next year you could establish an amount. But it gives you a, what's that?
I was gonna say, sometimes things move at the speed of town, Mark.
So any reserve has to be established, then you, then if the voters say yes, then you can put a number to it.
Okay. Can we back up to thirty-nine for a minute? The constables, is it possible to include a sentence in there saying, affecting a cost savings of nineteen thousand dollars?
You're not supposed to put anything that could influence a vote. We did, that's why all this old nu, language that, last year, the boards agreed to take out of there, cause the Secretary of State's office said, any language on a ballot that could influence a vote shouldn't be there. So last year's numbers, if someone says, I'm not gonna vote on this cause it costs more, then that could, that, they agree that that could influence. So if you put a number in there, that could influence, like somebody said.
I think it shouldn't be on the ballot, Mark, but I think that we should all feel free to talk that out. Because the, the office of constable and the police department, well, since we have a full-time police department, that, that's redundant. So we're eliminating that redundancy.
Right.
And we'll thank Mr. Loomis very much, Constable Loomis, very much for his service over the decades. In more ways than one, he served the town.
Yeah, I had a long meeting with him, and so there's a plan to, um, go after some state-level awards for career service awards and, and stuff like that, and he is, so I think, I think, of course, cause next year, he, you could put him in the town report, right? The dedication or something, cause he'd meet, he'd meet that criteria. But I have to notify the Criminal Justice Training Council that he is retiring and no longer, and serves, and there, in the statute, it talks about forty, a forty-five day period lapsing after, uh, he's done and less, and there's, it's, I don't have it in front of me, but it's in that language in the statutes, so we, we would be fine doing it. The way this is written, like, if the, the voters approve what the language is on the ba, on the, or on the, uh, ballot, you'll be fine, but, um, but I do have to notify the Vermont Criminal Justice Training Council that he is retired.
Okay.
We're gonna have to do that in any case because he's retiring.
Yeah, he won't, he's not running again, so.
He's a hurting puppy right now.
Is there anything more on February option one?
Uh, article number thirty. The words fireworks was not on the original, and it wasn't on last year's, but when I looked at the, the amount, that fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars in that budget for Memorial Day, dec, decorations, Fourth of July parade, it's also fireworks are in there.
All five of it, I think, is fireworks.
Yes.
That's the vast majority of it.
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure that was clarified in there so that people understood.
Mike and I got together this afternoon, we decided to just add that word fireworks in there, and that should satisfy the need to, for the voters, you know, to at least, if somebody asks a question, we, we'll, it'll perma, or prompt us to have the right answer.
Mr. Chairman, when you guys, uh, when we divvy up the articles for the town meeting, or pre-town meeting, um, I do have the documents for the Rutland County tax, so if the question gets asked, what do, what do we get as a town by paying this forty-three thousand dollars Rutland County tax? And I have the breakdown for the, the courthouses, the sheriff's department, that's, so, so somebody can be armed with, to answer the, um, the question.
Moving on, Board, what's your pleasure? Do we approve the Town of Castleton warning for the March fourth, twenty twenty-five town meeting as per February option one that the town manager has presented?
With the correction, yes.
With the correction.
Striking that line out.
Striking that line, as corrected. So I need a motion of that effect if that's what we're doing.
Can I make a, go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted, um, so this, this was added up today multiple times so that the numbers that are on here reflect the budget and the final number so that.
Everything's good.
Everything can't, nothing can be challenged as far as being inaccurate.
I would make a motion to approve the, we need to approve option number one, right?
No, it's, uh, that was just for us.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the warning for the Town of Castleton, excuse me, as written, except with the correction on article thirty-nine.
I'll second.
Could I ask that the date and time and location be added to them?
And with the addition of the date being, what was it, February?
It's up top here, Mark.
It's on the top there, Rob. Okay, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty.
It'll be at the Herrick Auditorium.
At the Herrick Auditorium at Castleton University.
Is that the same building it's always in?
Uh, the one of last year.
What building is what?
It's the, you, it used to be in Jeffords Auditorium, the one closest to the road. This, Herrick was the one right behind it, the little, next to, attached to the library.
Okay. I'll second.
I've moved and seconded to approve the warning for, for town meeting. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll all have to drop by the town office and sign this sometimes.
Well, you can just, if you take the back page of any one of these, that's why, there's four versions, um, you can sign any of these, I can just.
Send that one to Mark first, and he can sign it.
Tear it off and, well, I'll add it to the pages that are corrected, the, the page that's corrected.
Oh wait, there's only one copy. The rest of them are.
Have you put it in the blue binder or the blue folder?
I'll put it in the blue folder. Well, let me have the first three pages, or the first two pages. Put them all together.
Did you vote on that, four zero?
Yes, we did vote on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, the, uh, town report, dedication and in memory of, those pages are established now, Mark, or Mike?
Mark?
I called him Mike a few, little while ago, so. You're a victim of proximity.
I think that was a cut and paste error, honestly. Um, you guys have already told us what you wanted, we're in the process of just gathering information. I, I know I talked to the chairman about getting a photo.
I believe Hannah has that.
Okay, I shouldn't, I didn't hear that yet, but, so that's, that's, we're working on it, getting this stuff pulled together. Um, I may have to call you and ask some questions, um.
I'll talk to you tomorrow about, I'm delinquent on something, so.
Yeah, me too. So, yeah, so I think that, there's really no, unless you have discussion about it.
I have no discussion, so unless, uh, the board, rest of the board has something they want to discuss, we'll move on to Town Managers' Report. Okay, we're gonna move on. Mike, you're up.
Uh, page two, Small Scale Bike Pedant Grant, South Street. Um, the Title twenty-two review is underway, and it'll be about a forty-five day period or so to hear back. Once that's done, um, there's a couple utilities things that we gotta iron out on where they are at in relationship to the sidewalk, particularly the communications that, there's a little building, or consolidated or something like that, so we have to worry about, uh, figure that out. And, uh, I asked to meet with Kerry Fowler, um, for, talking about, for the Fire District and their infrastructure there. Um, but that, once we have that back, then it came, basically, the designs comes back for a hundred percent approval, and then it goes out to bid, and that would, with the, with the plan being, it goes out to bid by late March, early April timeframe, um, to get the, um, a jump on the contractors looking for early work, um, and get this thing on the, scheduled for this coming, um, fall, probably. Uh, I'm on page number four, at the very top, under the Highway Safety Improvement, um, grant ward. Uh, so there was a couple photos that were missing, so the, Jeff got those today, um, so we can finalize and get that thing submitted this week. Um, we underspent that one. When I did the, the grant, I really shot high with some cost, and they just bought it. And so it was a thirty-six thousand dollar grant, I think we ended up spending like fifteen thousand dollars, so less than half of it. But they put up a lot of signs. If you go on, uh, North Road, South Street, um, particularly, those, there's a lot of signs that were placed on that road. And there's some that we have the parts and pieces for, um, that still need to put in. Right near the rail trail, there's a, a short sign, um, that needs to be a new post put in, um, but we really underspent that, but we couldn't spend it anywhere else. I asked if we could extend it to other roads, and they gave me the finger wag, no. But we get a lot, a lot, all the signs that needed to be replaced were replaced with all new stuff. There was some, I'll come, that's later on. Uh, okay, enough of that one. Grants now open, or I'm on the same page, number four. The, uh, Class Two Structures Grant, um, kinda got, jumped the gun and submitted them early, and they, they held them for us, so now, now that it's open, they, they have them. So we applied for a, a Structures Grant for Brown Farm Road to replace that big culvert, and a Class B, um, grant for Moscow, um, to get some of that ledge out, pounded out of there where there's no ditching, and the water just runs across that, that ledge that's right in the road, and it creates a lot of ice and treacherous conditions in the winter. Um, so, uh, that's what that one was applied for. We're moving closer, I'm on page five at the top. Moving closer, he's, um, got the study materials he needed to be able to take the freon or the coolant, refrigerant out of, um, out of appliances, and, um, once he finishes that and gets his certificate, then we can start doing it in-house, which is a good cost, um, There's some notes on vehicles there, I'm not sure, I'm on the same page, number five, backhoe, um, just, it's back and running, but I put the note in there about the Chevy fifteen hundred, that's pretty much a, a junk, a hunk of metal that's not worth even looking at anymore, uh, but we'll get the plow off it. Uh, I was able to coordinate the CDLs, or at least not coordinate, it was not right now a good word, um, get approval from Casellas that they'll hold the CDL class here in town, um, for our three members in late March, early April, uh, just waiting to flush out the, the actual dates. But he said if you get, if you get, uh, the pre-trip stuff attacked early, which Hannah did for, um, DMV, that she, she's gonna work with them, so that, we're locked step on that. Um, and then get drivers training under the permit, that, uh, he said I could take a ten-day course and knock it down. the permit, that, he said I could take a 10-day course and knock it down to five days. So that's, that's our, that's our intent, is to get that knocked down to a five-day period by doing what they're asking us to do. I already talked, I'm at the bottom, I already talked about cameras. We visited there today, the wastewater plant, to put two more cameras in down there. I'm on page 7, the Water Collection System Repair and Maintenance at the bottom. I drove by again today, saw GW Savage, was still at Peremsky's place, but with all the traffic, I didn't stop, plus I had, I had the lady from Royals in tow behind me. I wasn't gonna ever stop there, too. But I'll reach out to them this week and, and just see where they're at. Cause I haven't heard anything from our insurance company on it. But I did receive a call from Brad at Fabian's about the road that was starting to, the shoulder was starting to fall in there. I drove by it today again and it still needs some more cold patch in it. But he asked me, do you want us to do the work? Keep an eye out for the winter and do the work, or do you guys wanna do it? Problem is, we don't have the, we'd have to rent a compactor to do this and we can, we got the little thing, wand to heat up the, the stuff, but we don't have the right-sized compactor. So we'd have to either borrow one if we could find it or rent one. So he said, I'll just give you a quote on it, you can look at the quote and let me know what you think. But he, and he's also gonna give me a quote to come back in the spring for the spring cleanup. And I don't think that we need them back there for that. I think we can do it on our own. But I'll look at his quote and see, see what it is. If it's reasonable, I'll bring it back to the select board, but, okay. We already, we kicked a horse on the, on page 8, on the, getting a, starting the process to get a cost estimate to see what it would cost to replace that old sewer line from Prospect Bay down here to the fire station. I'm on page number 9, FEMA 6B. Looks like they're, they're playing, they're playing nice in the sandbox with us, V-Trends is. Cause they, they actually upped the, the price of the project so that we get the full 200,000 from them, then plus our, we have a 20% match on it. But Jeff already met with Jethro, I talked to Jethro Doran today, I was texting with him. They've already met. So Jeff has the information on what he, what Jethro thinks it would cost to put that in. So I'll, I'll get that from Jeff. But the hope is that that's done before this fall. Cause we have a deadline of 31 December of this year to get that done. I'm on page 10, under Equipment. Was at the garage today. 120, the new tandem is back in service. The old one, he was fabricating a piece that he needed, needed, but that should be up and running this week, as long as everything works, this fabrication. The trackless, he's, he found out what oils to put in it. He called today to a trackless dealer and found out what oil to put in there, cause they had to replace hydraulic hose. So he'll do that, this, he was doing it, working on it today. The Dodge is back in service. And that's, that's, oh, you know, the pickup trucks out of service. That's it there. So moving in the right direction. I did share in there, in this report, I did talk to the president, or the general manager of Viking Survey's USA and was able to have a good conversation. And he supports, he understands what happened. He talked to his personnel and said they were, they've been directed to basically play nice with us and provide us the service that we, we expect. And he said if there are any problems, call them directly. So-
So they're gonna do the 6500?
No. That, they've, they've already, in the process, before I got to talk to this guy, his name is Mike, they'd already sold the parts to TNT, cause Jeff went down to TNT in Greenwich. And they said, yeah, we do this stuff and we'll, we'll put it on for you. So Mike, the, Michael Jackson is his name. He said basically, that, that one's, that one's gone by. Let's, from, we'll move forward, but they've got the parts, we gave them the quotes and all that stuff. So TNT's gonna do the work on that one.
In the same price range?
He said they gave them the same exact, what their costs were. So, that's, and Jeff's been down there several times with them. They do more than just that, but, they're putting on these plow packages and stuff like that. But the, the ship sailed, I guess, on the 6500 from, from Viking Survey's, but moving forward, or we shouldn't have any issues.
We're gonna have the 6500 service before next winter, are we?
Yeah, the, with TNT, it's supposed to be this fall is, cause you know, Jeff talked to him and said, eh, we can't go through another winter without it. It's just sitting there with, you know, no, it really has no value to us right now. So they said yes, so.
We already own the truck, right?
Yeah, it's just sitting there, cabin chassis, can't do anything with it. Just pay insurance on it and keep it undercover. It was a bad, it was just a bad, the whole thing was kind of a, one person in a company can really wreak havoc if they're left on their own accord, not reeled in. So, seems, going forward, I think the, the fences got mended, that needed to get mended. And then providing the service that we expect or want, to include parts. Trackless, talked about that one. Wood chipper, you know, I threw it out here for your consumption. I'm still on page 11, wood chipper. The, so we have an estimate of what it's gonna cost to buy the new fuel injection pump and an estimate for labor. Talked to him today, it has to be timed. And Evan's trying to figure out, he doesn't know anything about it. So it has to, they have to set the timing on this thing somehow. So I said, can you put the pump in there and do the timing? You have to, I don't really know anything about it. So he's doing a little research, but if it's out of his wheelhouse or something he can't do, then we're gonna have to look at-
Who diagnosed it?
Local business.
Do they wanna repair it?
They would. But it's labor and parts. The, a new part was like $2,800 and a, a remanufactured or rebuilt part was like somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,900, $1,800, $1,900, I think, or 20, it was, it was less money. But I asked Evan today to do the research on what the warranties are, a new one versus a rebuilt one. I haven't had a lot of luck with some of these rebuilt things. And I've had, but I've had good luck in a couple things, but most of them not.
I would think I would look into maybe having Evan take all the shields and cowling off, but then have whoever looked at it replace the pump.
That's what we discussed today was, you know, cause you take off, you break a bolt and you gotta tap it out. We can do all that stuff and have it just ready to put in the part, time it, whatever's gotta be done.
Running and then reassemble all the shielding afterward.
Yeah, that should be done by someone that's qualified and experienced with it.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the new one's in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 grand, so-
Yeah, no, there's no sense in replacing the whole thing for that.
Yeah, but that's what we talked about today, was like, hey, let's do what we can and then have somebody do it.
If the, if the other person is willing to work with us on that.
I talked to him, so he's good. The Ford, we talked about three, all of them on there, except for the last one, was that one? Okay, we talked about, everything on page 11. The only other thing, it's on page 12 that bled over was the bank. So I do, I do need to call them this week to go through the, the loan amortization schedule and that kinda stuff. But I'll do that this week. This was a situation awareness, or FYI for the board, on page 14 at the top, Crystal Lane. The barriers were being put up on Crystal Lane and somebody kept moving them. And so I had, I asked Jeff to go up and put posts in and the cable across it and marked a-
That's on the hill pulling on the 30?
Yeah. And so they've got that, it's, it's actually, the barriers are still there, too. They've kinda run the cable through the barriers. They got a padlock, padlock on it, padlock on it. And the fire chief, police have one, and the wastewater, they were given a key so they could, if they had to get through there, they can unlock it and get through. As of today, it was still up and nobody had messed with it. Page 14, CVS Building, just more little, these little, I don't know, ankle-biter type issues. The kitchen sink was blocked up and I had Russ go down and bring a part down to John, a, a balloon that blows up and jets water. And they were able to clear it out. I think he did it right before the meeting you guys were at. He said, I'm covered with nasty smelling water that blew back in my face. So, but anyways, cleared it out. And there's a few other things, the heating system. And, oh, I think there's a, something in here that is worth mentioning. I'm on page 15, in the yellow part. I would ask that the select board give some consideration to what you expect in the way of revenues from that building. Cause it's, it's, there's things that are all over the map. I mean, you hear somebody say one number, somebody throws out another number. But it hasn't, you got, this board is, it's gotta sta-, I would say, has to establish that. But I put some numbers in there just for figuring, I mean, if you take 10% of electrical, that's $1,400. You take 10% of fuel and you're talking, if we spend $30,000, that's $3,000. So you can start adding up just the utilities, you know, get you a number like what it costs to run that building. That's just 10%. But I'm not sure how, what you want from me in the way of information. But if you let me know, I'll gather all that up. And we can look at the total cost of utilities to include cleaning and all that kinda stuff and anything else you wanna include. And come up with a number. Because I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're, you know, gonna be able to reach it, but it has to be so.
I think we need to have the number of what's the cost to run that for pick-a-month, you know, a year, whatever. Utilities, cleanings, all that.
I mean, I, I figured you'd want all that stuff. But if there's anything else, let me know. Because we, I think we should have some mark on the wall, somebody knows what they're striving for.
There has to be a goal.
Yeah.
Where you don't know where you are.
Well, somebody's gonna ask us how much does it cost to keep the doors open in that place a month. And we have, right now, we don't have any, I don't have any answer for them. I have no idea what it costs.
Well, I mean, I know it's in the budget and what we use out of the budget. So, but that's everything. That's, you know, phones, internet, you know, all that kinda stuff. But if you're talking about utilities, like heat, lights, water, sewer, if you wanna add in, cause, does everybody benefit from wifi? I don't know.
But it's a cost of the building, I mean.
And we're talking 80, 85,000 this year was in the budget?
And what's realistic for them to be able to achieve with the infrastructure they have? You know, there's what you'd like to and what's realistic. I would think $1,000 a week would be a really good starting place for this year. That, that would give them a goal. I mean, if you break that down by the day, that seems really realistic. And they can plan how to get there. One of the things that drives me crazy right now is the lack of fee for activities that happen. And the fact that it should not be the same for out-of-town residents as in-town residents. In-town residents are already covering the cost of it through their taxes. And informally, I've looked at a lot of other rec facilities and it generally, it's $5 fee for residents for most programs, $10 for out-of-town. Some towns do a punch card where you get, you know, if you did 10 visits at $5 each, it would be $35. But if you buy a punch card, it's 25. And if you drop in, it's 10 or 12 or 15. But I, I really think there should be a directive that out-of-town participants are absolutely welcome, but they have to pay twice as much as a resident.
Absolutely.
You know, Josh Ferguson has been helping John down there. I ran into him and, and he was telling me that they had talked about how this would, they force, they, they could see it being a Western Rutland County recreational facility. And, you know, they could go to Fair Haven and say, hey, if you guys could afford $3,000, then your people could come. And it's like, no, that's, that's not how that's gonna work. The building costs $100,000 a year to keep. We're not gonna share half of that with another community for 3,000.
That's where that came from? Cause that was asked, question was asked, I'm like, I don't know, I've never heard that one. That was new to me. I heard the naming of the rooms and that kinda thing. But, yeah, I, I don't know, I just ask you in the board to give it some consideration for what you wanna set as a benchmark. And not just in the dollar amount, but maybe if there's any other things that, you know, like you said, double, double the fees for out-of-town. But that guidance that we can operate under and give, I can give guidance out there and we have a mark on the wall to, a measuring stick, I guess.
A friend of mine who's been the recreation director at Rattleboro for 30 years, I was talking to her today. And she's willing to come up to the next friends' meeting Thursday and next month and give a presentation on how they operate. It's a bigger community, but it would give us someplace to go. You know, how much they charge residents, how much out-of-town residents, what kinda programs make money, which ones don't.
I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here.
No, other towns have already done it. Saves a step.
For decades.
These programs don't work. So rather than attempt to try to make something that hasn't worked anywhere else.
Right.
We can skip over that.
Tried this for 10 years, it loses money all the time. This one makes money.
All right. Move on, Mike. Mark, I think your points are well taken.
Okay. The ARPA stuff that's in there on page number 16 for Dewey Field and Hydeville Field and all that stuff, that's in the ARPA, that was in the ARPA spreadsheet. So I'm not gonna beat the, the drum on that one. Went to Crystal Beach today. Got a quote for the overhead doors and the controllers at the garage. So now we can bring that back before the board. Yeah, it's in the budget, but it's over my spending threshold. So I gotta have the board approve it. I made a note at the bottom of 18, we're gonna be meeting with John this week to go through the key control. And we got the key box and all, and the procedures to be able to properly account for inventory and safeguard keys and access to the building. I'm on 21, under Emergency Management. The chief and I, police chief and I attended a subcommittee meeting this last week and they're changing the local emergency management plan format a little bit. So we need to meet before it's due on 1 May. So we have time to work on it and present it to the board in April, the first meeting in April. I'm on page number 22, Fire Department, Tower 1, the new ladder's in service. And I got a check today for $6,000 from the buyer of the old truck. So he's gonna come up this week and do a bill of sale. We never got a title on it. We still got the Massachusetts title on it, cause it's so old. But anyway, we'll be able to do paperwork with them and they'll-
Where's he registering?
He's in New York. He's just over the border somewhere, like Granville area, down that way, I think. But it's just not too far over the border into New York. But the good news is we got a check and that truck will be going down the road. I'm on page 24. I reached out to Thad from Black Bear to make sure they had received our contract for taking down the tree at 445 Main Street. I haven't received a call back yet. And I asked Jeff to reach out to him as well. But once I have that confirmation, I will then reach out to the Lamys and let them know so they're prepared. And it's the perfect time to do it, cause the ground's frozen. And barring your questions, that's it.
Any questions for the town manager? So we'll move on to purchase orders for approval.
Also, I would make a motion to approve purchase order number 053532 to Ed Eaton Fire Truck Repair- Repair for the sum of $3,760.50 for tower one pump service.
I'll second.
I'll move and second it. Any discussion? For what it's worth, Ed said that truck was in incredibly good shape.
Yes, nice truck.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's today, the 27th?
Mm-hmm.
Just have to remember what year it is. Okay, we're going to move on to warrants.
Also, I would make a motion to approve warrant number 0123 for the sum of $47,988.54. Warrant number 0127 for the sum of $39,397.45. Warrant number 0116P for the sum of $19,679.47. And warrant number 0123P for the sum of $19,668.1.
Second.
I'll move and second it to approve the warrants. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There it is. Oh, there it is. Knew there was one missing. Sticky paper. Come on, Mike.
You're four minutes ahead of time, ahead of schedule.
We can fix that.
Yeah, we'll give you four minutes.
We were 10 minutes ahead of schedule when we started the managers' report, Mike.
Yeah.
We've got to start getting some of the stuff off of there.
I know. I'd love to have that stuff. Say, "It's all done."
I even found a misspelling, but I didn't tell you.
On the managers' report?
It's probably more than one.
Well, you had "just" instead of "Justin."
No, it's "Just Justin." There's an old cartoon. It was Junior Bear. You remember Junior Bear? If you Googled Junior Bear, I am a good speller, it's worth, it's worth the watch.
I've been watching on Facebook, Tom and Jerry's.
Yep.
Sit there like a little kid.
You can't let kids watch those anymore. They're too violent.
Probably, hell.
But Ninja Turtles is okay. I can't, I don't get that. I can't wrap my hand around that. Yeah, I read somewhere, "Oh, my flood is too, too violent."
Oh, yeah. All those things.
Roadrunner.
The Roadrunner's always getting to the.
Roadrunner. I have to.
They ought to watch the news.
My daughter used to root for the Roadrunner. She'd never win, but.
Probably all don't know gummy bears.
That Roadrunner's a tough guy, boy. They, he went through a lot of bad stuff and he was always back.
He didn't know enough to stop.
Have you ever seen the episode where the coyote actually caught the Roadrunner? That was pretty funny. Because they had done some role reversal and the Roadrunner was about 40 feet tall and the coyote was the same size. And he had his arms around the Roadrunner's toe, looked up and just walked away.
Years ago, there was a Vermont farmer that went to Texas and he was with a Texas farmer and a Roadrunner ran across in front of him. And the Vermonter said to him, "What the heck was that that went by so fast?" He says, "That is the bird of paradise." And the Vermont farmer said, "Boy, he's a long ways from home, isn't he?"
All right, now we're going to move on to select board comments. Mark, do you care to comment on anything?
So we received that letter from Jim Lamy. Everyone saw that. I don't know if we want to respond to that or not. I did throw a little draft together.
I do want to respond to it and I'd welcome your draft, but I just barely got this today. So I haven't had a chance to digest it yet.
Sure.
But I'd be happy to give you a call tomorrow and we'll put our heads together because I have some questions and I'd love to see your draft and then we'll move on.
Okay. The other comment I had a few meetings ago, we adopted the Vermont Declaration of Inclusion. And I was wondering what your feelings would be about having that. What some of the other towns have done is have it printed up in a two-by-three roughly and display it in town buildings, like the town office, the police department, the fire department, highway garage, rec center, fire department.
We can consider that.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Really?
No, I'm fine.
I'm good.
So am I.
Bob?
Bob's not on, is he?
Honduras. No, he's in Honduras.
The last time I checked, he wasn't up there. Well, he's not, he's not shoveling snow, that's for sure. He's shoveling probably concrete or something now. I know he's down there trying to make a difference. So that's a good thing. Okay, we're going to move on to action items. I've got two on our list. These are for the entire board. We have to review the list of Ethan Allen requests for permissions. And we have to review the report that was submitted by John Scarborough. I don't have anything else for action items for the board. Do you? Does anyone? That was, that was an action item from the wastewater, or from the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Part of the study.
It is. It's part of the homework. Anything else? Seeing none, I believe we need a executive session for personnel.
I made that motion that we. An executive session for personnel to include the board plus the town manager.
Plus the police chief.
Plus the police chief.
At 9:04. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to go on to executive session at 9:04. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.